And enjoy. Tomorrow morning, actually, we're hosting a small group of people from the Ian Track Organization with Todd Selig. They'll be right here in this room. One of the things I want to talk about, the summer program, they end actually tomorrow, and their culminating activity is actually at Wildlife Encounters over in Rochester, where the students have built two habitats, one for a gray fox, and another, I just want to make sure I get this right, for an African giant crested porcupine, which the students tell me is the largest porcupine in the world. So that's what the kids have told me, so it's been wonderful. There has been a lot of changes, like, for example, the sod right up front, that was just laid down today. I've met with the playground people, they're actually on site. They told me the playground will be completed two weeks from today, so that's something for the kids to look forward to. And just a quick thank you to Bowen. I'm sure, again, you noticed the fence change, just the kind of personal touch they provide. We were a little bit concerned about the summer program drop-off this Tuesday morning, due to that change, but Andre himself was here personally with me and Adam to make sure the kids got into the building safely. So just example of the personal touch that they continue to provide. Placement, as Misty mentioned, that's going to be live for parents and students on Monday in Power School. So if parents have any questions about that, I'll also be informing parents of some general notes early next week. I also do want to share, again, what a great opportunity it's been for people here, just in this facility, with the climate control, stark difference in terms of the summer programming that we've had at the middle school in the past. I also want to talk about the grand opening, we're looking forward to that on August 23rd. We have the events laid out. I've actually personally reached out to some of the families we talked about before who will be in attendance. And also Wendy's been a big assist with email addresses, so I have a few to get out in regards to that. That'll be completed this week. The event will start at 11:00 a.m., Dr. Morsel speak, Board Chair Michael Williams, then dignitaries who attend. Doris has been great as well. We have ice cream and lemonade, that'll be in the learning commons like around noon. Sarah Kuhn has been wonderful, she's put together an all-star band. Several of the people are in this room who'll be playing, and we'll also have a piano performance from A Rising Eighth Gator, some of you might be familiar with. And then Dr. Morsel have closing remarks at 12:30, and they'll offer tours to anybody who's interested. So I'm really looking forward to that on August 23rd. Any questions? Yes, Brian?
Jay, the several hundred bricks that you have, are there still any left for people that may not have reserved some before, or are they all reserved?
So, we do have extras. So if anybody out there would like a brick from the 1935 part of the building, please reach out, call the office. So, we have actually been personally calling people to come in and pick them up, but we definitely will have extra bricks.
Okay.
Our goal, Brian, was to make sure that everybody who was on that list got a brick, but we're definitely going to have extras. So if you know of anyone who wants a brick out there, please have them reach out and call the front office.
Yeah, some people were asking, they just didn't reserve one.
Yep.
But they were asking, so just wanted to make sure.
Have them leave, please call us.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
Good evening, Rebecca Noe, principal at the high school. So a couple reminders and a couple new announcements. So first, project graduation for our class of 2023 is starting up, and so we're going to put something in the first newsletter when they send me some information, but just any new senior parents out there that may be watching, they are on social media, they have a Facebook page, so if they're interested in joining that group, they might want to go ahead and start looking for that page. But in the first newsletter on the 26th, I will have any information they've given me going out to all families. We do have a couple events coming up, I've mentioned before, but just to clarify for parents, I've gotten a couple questions about the Counseling 101. That is from 1 to 3 o'clock on August 17th, that is for freshman students. It's really a time where counselors will be there to introduce the kids to the high school, talk to them about what counseling can offer them, and it's a time to be in the building and get familiar with the building also. So if any freshmen are interested in coming to that, that's what that's for. We will have our Parent Night, our very first intro to High School for Parents, on August 18th at 6:00 p.m. It's really for any parents, but freshman parents especially, just any questions they have about what is high school like today? For example, ninth graders really don't understand what a credit is. So we talk about what is a credit? Why do they need to know that? How can you talk to your kids about what a credit is? They don't understand how those add up and make you graduate, so those are things that we'll just talk to parents about, too. And then last but not least, we have our Application 101, which is for any kiddos who either needed to fill out a college application or a job application. And there are two sessions, from 8 to 11, and then from 12 to 3 on the 18th. And then our last thing is the freshman orientation on the 25th. And so all freshmen, if they can come to that, we're going to have activities, NHS kids are there for tours, a little scavenger hunt in the building, they can follow their schedules, so those will be out. And then we're also going to have schedules out to families next week, so kids can see their classes, see their teachers, know what their schedule's going to be. And we're all sending letters out to families, an opening letter just to describe the year, the new schedule for next year, the days and how they're alternating, so all of that will be informed for parents next week. Okay, any questions?
Personal note, Rebecca, you love it when I do that.
Yes, I do.
You can share it, I think it's, you were just so excited when you called me.
I was, I was freaking out when I called Dr. Morsel on Sunday. I did a half Ironman on Sunday, and I got into the world championship in Utah. And so I asked her two days ago. Thank you.
When is that?
So a half Ironman is a 1.2 mile swim.
When?
When is it? October 27th and 28th. The 28th is women, and the 29th, the Saturday, is men. So I have to go out the day before, because you have to pick up your stuff and register and everything, rack your bike the day before. Yeah, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
What happens when you tell me things, Rebecca?
All right, and announcements, accommodations, and comments from the board? On tonight? All right, so we'll move to district reports then. Assistant Superintendent, Suzanne?
So, bear with me while I attempt to plug in and project. I don't think anyone's done this here yet. That is not, you should see.
Is that the lake behind the S.A.U.?
Yeah.
Let's see if this works. Okay. Here we go. So, what I'm going to briefly talk about is restorative practices. I'm going to talk about this in relationship to the strategic plan, as well as the work, just specific work that we've been doing. So what I'd like to do is do the presentation, and then if people have questions at the end, I can answer questions that you may have. So, restorative practices really are, can be found in a variety of different institutions. Schools are one of those institutions. They work to build positive school culture and school climate, and really has an impact on everybody within the community. Teachers, students, staff, parents, everyone in the community. And it's really about building relationships. It's about making positive choices, supporting kids through their choices. It's about creating a stimulating environment and a supportive, safe environment. There's a lot of different elements to these practices. And you can see some of these practices in the school today at Oyster River, but you can see them in other schools also. So what I'm going to talk a little bit about is where you see them here at Oyster River, and also how we're working to expand these practices as well. Within a school environment, you can see them within an SEL curriculum, so you'll see the Castle Standards, which are the standards that we use at Oyster River. Those include awareness of self, awareness of others, they include positive or problem-solving, they include communication. These are all skills that we talk about when we talk about 21st century learning expectations, vision of a graduate, SEL. So these are skills that are part of restorative practices. You can also see it in advisory programs that we have at all levels, and you can see it within restorative justice. And so restorative justice, we could refer to it as sort of our codes of conduct that we have, and the handbook that we have, and I'm going to come back to all of these a little more specifically also. For Oyster River, I think it's really important to do this work for Oyster River, not only is it part of our strategic plan, but it's in our vision. We talk a lot about creating a safe environment for kids and for adults, and restorative practices helps to create that culture and that climate that is positive, and that helps people feel safe within their environment, to learn and to, just to be. And so I think that's really important. I also think that it helps kids take risks within their academics, if they feel that their environment is safe and supportive, as well as making sure they feel valued and they feel seen and heard and known. And I think that's, those are things that we really hold at the heart of what we do here, and I think it's important to note that these practices really help and support that also. They also look at restorative justice and exclusionary practices within codes of conduct and discipline. And so, when I, when I talk about exclusionary and non-exclusionary practices, I'm talking about removal from the school environment because of a choice that a student makes. So, we're talking about suspensions and expulsions primarily. Our strategic plan talks about restorative justice techniques, it talks about it in relationship to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so this is what the strategic plan has. We have been working along with this. We have begun to implement restorative practices, and we're going to, in restorative justice, and we're going to continue, continue that work, so that students and faculty and staff and leadership all have the tools they need to be able to respond appropriately when necessary. So districts that have put into place restorative practices, there's a lot of research out there on practices, and one, one large district is the California District, they implemented restorative practice, and they've been collecting a lot of data. And some of the data that they've looked at has to do with absenteeism, it has to do with credit earning, which Becca was just talking about. When you, when you have exclusionary practices, or you have, respond to discipline with exclusionary practices, you pull kids from the learning environment for an extended period of time, makes it very challenging for them to reintegrate into the community socially, emotionally, and academically. And so with, with restorative justice comes the idea of not removing them for an extended period of time, but working with them, with the student and with the community, to be able to reintegrate them into a safe environment where everybody feels comfortable, and allow them to continue to gain the credits they need so that they don't drop out. Because the longer time, the longer kids are out of school, the higher the probability that they will drop out of school. And so we want to keep kids in school, we want to keep them learning as much as we possibly can. To keep credit earning and to change behavior. The whole goal with restorative justice is to help kids and support kids to change their choices and their behavior. Because we can keep suspending a student, but if they don't change their behavior, then what's, then that's not really accomplishing anything for the student or, or for the school. So I, I like this, because it really lays it out into, you know, sort of in a visual way. Really talks about creating a safe learning environment where students feel not only emotionally safe, academically safe, but physically safe as well. Students really are connecting, building relationships with adults, adults are building relationships with students, that's being known, being heard, going back to our vision. And also, it allows students to take risks, and it allows for that higher, those high expectations of students to take those risks and to, to learn about themselves in that process. And it also contributes to building community, because that's really what we want, is we want to build our school community. So, in looking at restorative justice, as a school board, you've already responded to the legal changes and the statute changes. So the state of New Hampshire had changes to exclusionary practices, and so that informed policy changes, which you've already seen within, within the discipline policies that, that we have. So, in order to actually remove a student from the school environment for some sort of, as a disciplinary measure for, for a choice or a behavior that they had, that would really have to be, that's about safety. It's about things like weapons, or possibly drugs, or it's about major safety concerns within the community. And that's all laid out in the statute and in the law, and so we've adjusted our policies to do that. What then happens after you've adjusted your policies, we then have to look at our codes of conduct. And so within each school, in our handbooks, we have our codes of conduct. And so now we have to make sure our codes of conduct are reflecting appropriately what you have passed as the policy and what state law tells us. And so that's what the principals have been working on with their leadership team, is their codes of conduct, and you will see those codes of conduct at the next school board meeting. There are other ways we've been engaging in restorative practices, and I'm just going to name a few, there's a lot here, but I think these are really important, and there's others also that, that we've been engaged with. But the leadership team, members of the leadership team and counseling have been involved with training this year, is multi-day seminars that we've been going to, and participate, well, last year, and participating in, to give us the foundation that we need to, to look at restorative practices and restorative justice. And we're going to be looking now at training and educating staff. There are members of the staff and, that already have these practices in, as a part of their regular practices, I'm going to talk a little bit about that, but they're already doing this. But we also want to open it up, if people want to gain more information and, and learn more about it, as we make this shift, if there are people that want to be part of that, we want to give them the opportunity. So the, there are online opportunities that we are going to make available to faculty that would like to participate in them, to learn more. We have our MTSSB, so our tiers of support, that we've spent a lot of time and, and put a lot of attention into. Those tiers of support have restorative elements with them. Things like creating student plans, that's, that's, if we create a student plan to help meet the needs of that individual student and personalize the needs for that student, that, there are a lot of restorative pieces within those plans typically. So that would be an example of that. There are, we do have evidence-based curriculums in our elementary school, the Open Circle Curriculum. Those are teaching kids some of the restorative circle techniques and skills that they need to be able to have restorative circles, to be able to work on a problem. For instance, on the playground, if there was something happening with a group of kids, instead of responding with a punitive measure, circling those kids up and having a restorative circle to talk about what is happening and engage in those conversations, the kids are learning those skills in open circle, and then they can, they can use those skills that they're learning to be able to solve some of the conflicts they may be experiencing on the playground. We have been participating in some restorative circles with adults. So in our training this summer, we had a three-day leadership retreat on restorative practices and restorative justice, and in that training, we participated in restorative circles together. So there are, there are examples of that happening at the school buildings, and we'd like to continue that, so that the adults can experience this for themselves and see the value with it. And then conferences, restorative conferences is something, that's something we do. Anytime it's possible to have any type of mediation, or any type of conference for re-entry, if a student has a conflict with an adult, or if there's a choice or a behavior that maybe impacted somebody else in a negative way, we, whenever possible, we try to utilize those restorative conferences. So, learning more about these skills, learning more about these practices, and implementing them more fully is really what we're looking to do. So, we're moving along very well within, within the strategic plan, even though we did have an interruption, we are making progress, and, and all of the principals are working on their codes of conduct now to bring, to make sure that they're in, in alignment with the New Hampshire state law and also the policies. And that is a very quick summary, and I'd love to be able to answer questions you may have, yeah.
This, the rest, restorative justice really has to do with the offender. What about the other side of that, the victim of the harassment, of the, you know, was that following Title IX? Does that's kind of, that's kind of a whole different set of rules?
Yeah, so, so when we're talking about anything that has within restorative, within restorative justice, you would have to ensure that everyone feels comfortable engaging any, in any sort of restorative circle. And there are times where it's not appropriate. So, that would have to be determined by the people that are involved, to be able to determine what's appropriate. And there are places within sexual harassment and other places where it's not, where it's highly likely that it's not appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, I can see times where, depending on the level of the harassment or discrimination, whatever it is, where you get everyone together for a learning moment, they'd be extremely uncomfortable.
Yeah, and I think that's-
Or even more embarrassing.
That's part of that education piece, to know that, you know, you need to be able to understand what it takes to have it be effective and a positive impact on the school culture and climate and all the people that are involved. So if you don't, if it's not going to result in something positive for the people that are involved, you wouldn't, you wouldn't want to do it. Yeah.
I had a similar question, actually, with the, what you're learning from the, from the person who might have had harm done to them or perceived harm, because, but the ideal is that the offender, or however we, we say it, sort of, instead of just receiving punishment, has this increased empathy and understanding, and sort of leads to behavior change that way, but it can also put an onus or an expectation on the, you know, the person who has been harmed to, you know, to relive it, or to have to share beyond what they feel comfortable with or safe for, you know, or wanting to do in the first place. And yet, there's sort of a skill in being able to, to reflect from, from both sides. So just wondering more of what you're seeing, or what questions that haven't been answered yet from that, you know, from that other side of the, the student that might have felt harmed or, you know.
I think that's a great question, and, and I think it relates to what Brian just asked. I think that there's an appropriateness and there's, and there's inappropriate places. And I think that you don't engage in something like a restorative circle with people that still feel harmed and feel victimized, that's not necessarily, that's not appropriate. So, I think there's a time and a place for the practices, that's part of the learning process about what, what, how you implement these practices effectively, to be able to have a positive impact on the culture and the people, and people, and not have a negative one. So that's, that's part of the whole process. We wouldn't, we would never revictimize a victim. That's not appropriate.
Makes sense. And then my, my comment or suggestion, once we get more, even more mature, though you've making great strides, is to offer community workshops on this topic. I think families would love to learn more.
Absolutely. I think that's a great idea.
It sounds to me, too, like the, the restorative practices really dovetail nicely with trauma-informed practices, you know, and, and sort of working together with children that may have, you know, experienced trauma, experienced different things, and as a result, maybe lead to certain behaviors, you know, where certainly punishment is not at all, I mean, it's never probably really helpful, but in those circumstances certainly is not. And just thinking that, you know, the value of being able to have that connection and support and all those different types of, of, you know, just support.
Absolutely. And we, and the building of relationships, I think, is key to that. So how can we work to build positive relationships and, and help students and, and even adults feel valued, feel seen and heard and understood? And I think that's all part of that, it's part of all of it.
Yeah. So the first question, the codes of conduct at the school level, will Mastway and Moherramet have the same code of conduct, or is it going to be building-
No, they're very, there's parts that have to be the same, because we, we need to ensure that we're following school board policy. But if you look at, if you look at the student handbooks, middle school, the high school, middle school, and elementary look different. Will Mastway and Moherramet be similar, the two? Yes, there will, there will be similarities, and there will be some areas that are different. So for instance, something like drop off and pick up in, in the handbook might look different, but the codes themselves, there'll be similarities. And we'll talk a little more about that on the 17th, you'll see the specifics behind that, the principals will talk about that.
And then, at some point, maybe not tonight, if it's not appropriate, talking about the rollout of the care and community curriculum at the middle school?
Yes, we will be talking about that at a later date, yes.
So I hate to keep being the transition guy, but-
No.
If there is going to be codes of conduct that are different between the three levels of schools, is there work with the students rising into the fifth grade and into the ninth grade to make clear that they're looking at a different set of expectations, maybe?
So, we're working as a leadership team to look at all levels and how the, and what that progression looks like. And so you will see similarities with all levels, and then you will see, you will see consistency and progression. And so, net, for transition, we can talk about that after, we, we need to make the changes first, and then we can talk about how we're going to transition the kids between fourth and fifth, and yes, we can do that. We're not at that point now where we're doing it, because we're making changes to all of them, so.
Okay.
But I think that's a great question, too. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Morse?
Before I get to what's written, Doris gave me a proposal that would require your vote, and she apologizes for not presenting it at the last meeting when you approved her pricing. What she would like to do, excuse me, what she would like to do in this upcoming year is for the district to cover the cost of reduced meals, as, and of course, there's no cost for free meals. The total cost to the district to do this is $2,506.24. So, the reason it's so small is we have such a small population of kids in need, and- practices, and sort of working together with children that may have experienced trauma, experienced different things, and as a result, maybe lead to certain behaviors, where certainly punishment is not at all, I mean, it's never probably really helpful, but in those circumstances certainly is not. And just thinking that the value of being able to have that connection and support and all those different types of, you know, just support.
Absolutely. And the building of relationships, I think, is key to that. So, how can we work to build positive relationships and help students and even adults feel valued, feel seen and heard and understood? And I think that's all part of that, it's part of all of it.
So, the first question, the codes of conduct at the school level, will Mastway and Moherramit have the same code of conduct? Or is it going to be building?
No, they vary. There's parts that have to be the same, because we need to ensure that we're following school board policy. But if you look at the student handbooks, the high school, middle school, and elementary look different. Will Mastway and Moherramit be similar, the two? Yes, there will be similarities and there will be some areas that are different. So, for instance, something like drop off and pick up in the handbook might look different. But the codes themselves, there'll be similarities. And we'll talk a little more about that on the 17th. You'll see the specifics behind that. The principals will talk about that.
And then, at some point, maybe not tonight, if it's not appropriate, talking about the rollout of the care and community curriculum at the middle school?
Yes, we will be talking about that at a later date, yes.
So, I hate to keep being the transition guy, but if there is going to be codes of conduct that are different between the three levels of schools, is there work with the students rising into the fifth grade and into the ninth grade to make clear that they're looking at a different set of expectations, maybe?
So, we're working as a leadership team to look at all levels and what that progression looks like. And so, you will see similarities with all levels and then you will see consistency and progression. And so, for transition, we can talk about that after. We need to make the changes first, and then we can talk about how we're going to transition the kids between fourth and fifth. And yes, we can do that. We're not at that point now where we're doing it, because we're making changes to all of them, so. But I think that's a great question, too.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Suzanne.
All right, Dr. Morris.
Before I get to what's written, Doris gave me a proposal that would require your vote, and she apologizes for not presenting it at the last meeting when you approved her pricing. What she would like to do, excuse me, what she would like to do in this upcoming year is for the district to cover the cost of reduced meals, and of course, there's no cost for free meals. The total cost to the district to do this is $2,506.24. So, the reason it's so small is we have such a small population of kids in need. And what I would describe this group of students are, they may be experiencing food insecurity, but their parents' income doesn't support them getting free food through the program. And since this is such a nominal cost, I don't know what's going on with the lights.
So, it's not just me?
No, it's not just you.
Are they motion sensitive?
I think so. We need to dance.
The light slowly gets thrown out. Am I dying?
So, I would like to propose to the board that we cover the cost of those children who would qualify for reduced breakfast and lunch costs in the upcoming school year. And the cost to the district is $2,506.24. So, if that meets the board's approval, then I would need a motion in a second and we would add that to last meetings.
Denise?
I'd like to make a motion for the school district to cover the cost for the reduced meals.
We have a second from Brian. Discussion?
So, the $2,500 would come out of the district budget, not out of the nutrition budget?
Correct.
Okay. But if she could cover it within the nutrition budget, would she?
While we have always provided a nominal amount, well, it used to be significant. When Sue and I first got here, it was probably approaching $100,000, because the food program wasn't solvent. We have kept a nominal amount in the regular budget, so this won't have an impact on anything in the budget.
I thought there was a wall between where these funds could come from and that they couldn't come from the school nutrition.
And they can't come from the school nutrition. They have to come from the regular budget. That's exactly right. I thought that's what Heather was asking.
Yeah.
He was.
Yeah.
Other questions? All those in favor of approving coverage for?
Is there a second?
There was a second from Brian. Yep. All those in favor? Seven in favor. That is adopted.
It'll seem like a small thing, but it's really a big thing for the families impacted. So, thank you very much. So, my intention this evening was to have Jasmine Daniels, who is our interim facilities director, do the presentation on the update in terms of where we are in summer projects. Unfortunately for, well, unfortunately, she can't be here tonight and you can do the dot-dot-dot. It's like what's happened to me and others. So, I thought I would just do a quick update and give you a sense of where we are. So, I know that there's a lot of interest in relation to the tennis courts and where we are. The tennis court surface will be done about the third week of September. It'll be done-done. And that's largely just due to the work demand of the contractor. And as you probably have driven by the high school, you can see the surface is ready. Gives you a good sense of that work. It's going to be really impressive when it's done. I'm thinking about today, when Sue came into my office in a panic, and the vendor for the lights just dropped them on the field and left. Sue was running around at 3:00, trying to figure out how she can get those boxes inside a building. I don't know what they were thinking, but we have the lights. The boilers from the middle school, you might recall, we had just replaced those boilers maybe five years before the demolition of the middle school, so they were in incredibly good shape. They are in the process of being installed. They will save a dramatic amount of money, because they are efficient boilers. And so, that was a really good move for the high school. So, that's well underway. The Moherramit air handlers, David, did you have a contractor there? It's supposed to be happening this week. Have you seen the contractor?
Yes.
Great.
They've been there and they're making great progress.
Awesome. And then, at the high school, we continue to work on our AC project, and we are at the point where three of the handlers have been installed. Unfortunately, we probably will open up the fall without them, and of all the falls, we should have them, it's probably this. But it will be about three weeks into the school year before they're operational. And then, we have been remodeling the high school nurses' office. So, the nurses' office is now going to be occupying the principal's conference room area, and we're remodeling the stage and the multipurpose room to act as the conference room. And all of that work is ongoing. So, those are the major projects that are going on in the district. And so, everything is close to deadline, but everything is very actively being worked on. And on this side, as Jay alluded to, they've started installing the playground equipment. So, that's pretty exciting. We looked out the back strings room, you can see some of the pieces are in already. So, just to give you a concept, this side of the building, this corner of the playground will be playground equipment. The other side of the corner of the building will be basketball and four-square, and we'll be connecting those two play areas with a mini-field, so the kids will be able to play volleyball or other activities. So, it's really going to be a really cute playground, and I'm looking forward, just as Jay is, to see it totally operational. We are investigating the possibility, and we don't know whether we can afford this yet through the building funds, possibly laying down turf fields so that the kids can instantly play when they come in. Because if we do it traditionally, like we did out in the front of the building, it won't be available to them. So, we're looking to see whether we can afford that with a continued CMO. So, that's where we are. I'd be glad to answer any questions related to that. Denise?
Just the middle, the high school NPR stage renovation. So, that whole stage is going to be a conference room? Is that?
Yep. So, we added steel, so we have to have steel framing and the same kind of floatable walls that we've seen the district put in over the elementaries. And the high school will go in there, so it can be used in the evening for other things. But during the daytime, it'll make an awesome conference room.
Oh, so the wall is going to be able to be moved to? Oh, interesting.
Yep. And I want to thank Rebecca for her flexibility in all this, and she's come up with some pretty clever ideas beyond that. I don't know if you have walked into the high school recently, but she also carved out the senior, you know where the senior core is in the building? You all can register that. So, it used to be a very inefficient use of space, and she's pulled the half-height lockers out and created basically a sitting area for the kids. So, instead of them just hanging out and finding places to sit, which often isn't the floor, she's set it up so that they'll be able to meet together, they can bring games in, they can just socialize in a much more comfortable way. And it has the added advantage of keeping them out of the hallway, because as adults, that's a throughway in the building. I just think it was super clever and credit for that. And that was just the cost of moving lockers. And we're using the old tables from the high school in the high school in that area. And then, she's shipped off a bunch of them for Jay to use in this building, because people want little work tables. So, we're reutilizing that furniture. I think it's just going to work really great for both schools. Any other questions?
The Moherramit retaining wall, is that the one by the playground?
Yes.
The large silver slide that's right there? Are they working around it, or is it disappearing?
David? I don't know the answer, because I haven't gone up and looked at it. I know it's underway.
That project, sorry. That project will begin in a few weeks. The slide is not moving. The work is being done between the slide and the stairs that enter down to the playground, and it'll just be that. You can't miss it. Right now, the fence is falling over, so that's what's being replaced. But the slide is staying.
It's going well?
That part hasn't started yet. Just the air handlers are being done now.
They haven't started the wall?
No, they're coming in next week to do the major demo work, and then in a week and a half or two weeks, I think they're going to come in to finish. But it should be ready for school.
Awesome. Thank you, David. The next piece on the agenda for me is the DEIJ transition plan, and I'm going to invite Rachel and Suzanne up to the podium. To preface this, this is really a draft. Rachel saw it for the first time on Monday. The DEIJ committee has not seen it. This is literally Suzanne and I brainstorming in our office to jumpstart this process, because we knew that Rachel was starting in August, and we didn't want her to have to figure this piece out, since she's not familiar with the district. So, I want to welcome Rachel to the district, first of all.
Hi, Rachel.
Hi, everyone.
And Rachel, why don't you just introduce yourself, and since this is the first time the full board has seen you in your official capacity?
Yeah. Hi, everyone. You all know me, so I won't bother name and pronouns, but I'm super honored and excited to be here with you all tonight, as my first school board meeting ever. And I'm just really excited to begin working with you all on DEIJ efforts and supporting teachers, staff, and faculty through this work.
Thank you, Rachel. So, in terms of this transition plan, please remember, it is a draft, even though when you put stuff down on paper, it looks very official. First of all, we felt it was important for Rachel, when she came in, to know what her primary responsibilities were. And one of them is to coordinate the DEIJ committee. And then, in terms of these first months with us, it's really to get to know us. I mean, there's a lot of getting-to-know-you activities here. She'll be meeting with the entire faculty on the first day of school. She'll be meeting at building levels. She'll be meeting in small groups. She'll be meeting on one-to-one. And really, it's an orientation period for Rachel, but also for the role. We felt it was important for her to do a needs assessment from the staff, getting to know the staff on one level, but also getting to know the staff and determining what their needs are. So, we'll be doing what I would call a down-and-dirty needs assessment, so that she can get a sense of what the high school is looking for, what the middle school is looking for, what the two elementaries are looking for. And then, outreach in terms of outside the schoolhouse, introducing herself to the broader community. So, that's an important piece of what she would do. And, you know, help us grow. So, what I said to Rachel Monday was, we've had a lot of DEIJ activities, and we have a lot to be proud of, but they're somewhat, they were somewhat random. They're not synchronized. There's not an overall plan. And really, what we're looking for from her is the research that would help us build a sequential plan, much like we did with technology, much like we did with social-emotional learning. These were all new endeavors that the district had never ventured into until they became part of our strategic plan. So, we highlighted certain activities, and you'll see some of those activities repeat themselves. For example, every month, I've asked Rachel to produce a DEIJ article. And so, she's asked me, what does that look like? It looks like what's happening with our students, what's happening with our professional staff, highlighting an activity that has been incredibly powerful, highlighting the student groups, so that we can continuously inform the community in relation to the activities we're doing. Holding public forums, obviously, you know, there's only so much capacity, but maybe quarterly, in this particular six-month plan, we actually ended up doing one, thinking getting to know the school district was going to be an enormous undertaking all by itself. So, as you look down through this, my next stage with this would be to, besides sharing it with Rachel, is share it with the DEIJ committee and get their input, but I also was interested, of course, in your input. So, as you look down through this, did I miss, did Sue and Suzanne and I miss anything huge? And so, that's really what this is about. It's kind of like a first blush for all of you, and then we carry it to the committee. Denise?
I think it looks great, actually. I feel like it, I'm looking at, of course, Rachel, it's important, you know, Rachel, obviously, what you think of it, but it seems very reasonable to me. I agree, you know, one event is plenty given everything else that's going on. I do think it's important, obviously, to be flexible, because certain things may come up, needs may rise to the top, that become more important than certain other things. So, you know, I think it's important as far as remaining flexible, but other than that, I felt like you kind of hit the important points.
Okay, Denise. Heather?
So, the first thing that caught my attention was the creative press release. It happens every month, and then December, it changes to distribute a press release. And so, it made me wonder what the purpose and where the publication and what the plan with that is, because the way I read it right now, it seems like busy work. Like, we want you to practice creating press releases, but we're not actually going to tell you where you're going to put it out, or like, is it published with the newsletters? Or are we sending it to Fosters? Like, this is, like, that all?
So, we have a company that takes our press releases and distributes them across the media, WMUR, Fosters, Manchester Union Leader. So, when she's drafted one, it's no different than the principals or me. We draft press releases, we send it to this company, they clean it up to make it what newspapers or the press is looking for. Often, they ask for specific information that we didn't include, and then, once it's reached that level, they send it back to me and say, is this ready to release? And so, that's the process. So, any of us author them, we run them through that company to make sure they get distributed properly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, the?
That's Jim not being consistent.
And then, so that's sort of external, but are we also publishing them internally as well, so that'll go out in, say, the school newsletters or in some sort of?
Yep, exactly. So, she's going to highlight something that's happening at the high school. Becca would include that in her newsletter, same with Jay, David, and Misty. So, if we're going to highlight something that's going on in the building, we want to make sure that the building is the place that is featured, but that will also be shared district-wide. So, it's not, even though it's a Mastway event, it will be shared with the district in terms of the results.
Then, the other question I had with the connect with individual teachers to visit classrooms, is that by teacher request or administrator request?
It's going to be both. So, when you have something new, if you don't proactively ask, then you may not ever be asked. So, there'll be teachers who already are waiting to meet Rachel, they've already contacted me, when are we going to do this, that, the other thing. And there'll be teachers who won't necessarily reach out, and then that's why we want to do the needs assessment internally. And that also gives Rachel an invitation into the classroom, so, oh, I saw this is something that's important at the elementary school, and have that conversation. So, doing the internal needs assessment is really providing her with an invitation into the classrooms, and all four principals will make sure that happens as well. She'll be meeting with all the first grades, all the second grades, you know, that way. So, I'm very confident that the principals will make sure that Rachel has access.
I also think that that type of outreach happens, it can happen, it can happen also where a teacher may be speaking with a principal, and they may be having a conversation about something that's happening in the classroom, and knowing that Rachel's new, they may not automatically think, oh, this is a resource I can go to. So, sometimes, principals may say, you know, may say, I'm going to have Rachel reach out to you. That might be a way to connect teachers that aren't thinking this is a resource for me as well. So, that connection might occur that way.
How do you feel about it?
Oh, I met with Suzanne and Dr. Morris, and I talked, I looked it over. I think it's a really realistic plan for six months. I think in particular, all the items that have been mentioned in terms of like getting to know the district, getting to form relationships, I think that was one of the biggest things upon coming in. And the needs assessment was an idea that we thought of while reviewing this because when thinking about teacher workshop days, thinking about professional development opportunities, or even resources, like bringing myself to the classroom, that will better inform me in terms of like what the district needs, what are teachers seeing, what do students need help in terms of supporting. So for me, I feel like it's a very realistic plan, and I think it will allow me to form better bonds and relationships with the different groups that are here and with different stakeholders.
So I had one other comment.
Sure.
The professional development workshop, the word optional is there?
The way that we've modeled professional development in the district is we typically, I mean Suzanne really modeled this the best at the high school, is we create a multiple opportunities in a professional development day. So Rachel may be one with a specific focus, and then technology might be another one, that kind of thing. And we've rotated. So we're going to provide that time for Rachel to work her way through. The professional development days by themselves won't do the trick. They just don't happen often enough. But she'll be an integral part of the first day of school, and she'll be an integral part of our workshops throughout the year. But we're really talking about five workshops, if I'm right, Suzanne?
Yeah. And a lot of those, a lot of those days are already spoken for, for teacher-parent conferences and some other, you know, and other trainings that we're doing. So it is challenging that those days aren't, and by saying optional, Rachel may find in her, by doing her needs assessment, she might find that faculty, that there are a small number of faculty that are interested in learning more about, you know, resources and teaching about the Holocaust. And so Rachel may do an after-school 45-minute optional opportunity for people to come and learn more about those resources. So instead of doing, okay, you know, we're going to have a, so I think that that's, as she gets to know the district and what the teachers need and what students need, that type of evolution of professional opportunities may be more optional because she's trying to learn more about it. It may shift over time.
Yeah, I would just be interested to see how this all works out, if there are folks that are resistant, potentially dodging repeated optional offerings, that at some point, we may need to say, you need to go to one.
Absolutely. Yeah. And one of the workshops that Rachel will be actually handling is you all. One of the requests was to have a workshop for the board. So, and I get what you're saying, Heather. It takes us a while. Even on the restorative justice presentation, it'll take us a long time, maybe three to four years before that's fully implemented. And being a new position and a new person, it'll take a while for her to get to the place where Suzanne said, oh, I have a resource, I'm going to call Rachel. So everything that we do new takes a while for it to root. But we've been pretty successful. Our teachers have been very open to newness.
I'm really glad that you're here, that we finally got to the first of August. When I look at the, there's a number of things here that continue from month to month, and I'll be really interested to see how, you know, if some of those bubble up as higher priorities than others as we get to know the district and we find really where those needs are the greatest. So that'll be an interesting thing to circle back on as this gets, you know, more concrete. You've mentioned the first day of school a couple of times, Dr. Morse. I think you're referring to the first day of school for staff, right?
Yes, yes. First Staff Development Day is the day that I welcome the staff back, and we'll make sure that Rachel has a prominent place in that agenda.
Great. Others?
Thank you very much, everyone.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. That wasn't so bad, was it? And then this Oyster River Care optional insurance coverage. We talked about this at the board level, but you have not seen the R document. And Josh is here.
Yes.
So I invite Josh up. He and the tech integrators have worked very hard, actually, to try to quantify this program and articulate it in a way that parents can see the advantage. It's really a nominal amount of money, but it can really save parents an immense amount of money. So, Josh?
Yeah, so this is what we've pulled together, and really, the reason behind this is just before, it was as things got broken, we just started charging parents, and it just got really bad during the pandemic. And we really wanted to have something where it laid out what potential costs there are. So it's clear. It also gives principals guidance when there are issues. And then, like Dr. Moore said, trying to come up with a nominal fee for people to opt into. If you're, if people qualify for free and reduced lunch, there is no cost. We're routing, we're trying to route all the payments through Titan, which is Doris's program. So that way, she can just send us a list and not divulge anyone's free and reduced lunch status, as that's protected information. And the way it works is you'd pay the $20 per student, and then if anything happens, we go ahead and fix it, and then there'd be another $20 fee to re-enroll. So it's similar to, you know, like a Apple Care program, is what it was kind of modeled after, although I think they have a initial fee and then a fee structure depending on what it is. So ours is just 22 enroll, 22 re-enroll. We do have some provisions in there. If it does seem like the damage is deliberate, or continues to happen in a deliberate manner, we'll work with the principals through their discipline process to kind of go through that. But that's the gist of it. This outlines, you have a couple of cost tables in here of what we're, what we came up with in terms of parts and labor, so people can see what the costs are. Unfortunately, parts are still pretty hard to get, and parts are definitely higher than they were when we started the program, for sure, four years ago at the middle school. So some of the, some of the parts can be pretty pricey, so.
Josh, do you have a sense of how much you spent on replacement parts last year?
That is a good question. I did not grab that with me.
I would say, Josh, part of it is that you used older machines to repair newer machines because you couldn't get parts?
We were cannibalizing a lot of stuff to make stuff work. If, yeah, if we could find parts, we'd get them. I was scouring the deep, dark recesses of the internet to get anything we could. I'd say our biggest issue was screens, and we probably went through, oh, boy, I cannot remember the numbers off the top of my head. I mean, I feel like we, I believe I was budgeting about $10,000 a year just in repairs, and I'm pretty sure we went through that and then some with all the different things. One of the issues we had was the assembly, when you drop it, the actual case, so the top where the keyboard is, and then the edges, those would break and cause further damage. So that was another part that we spent. But I definitely went through everything I had budgeted, and then we did collect money from other people. Because we had some, I can think of an incident where it was left on a car, and so that was a total loss. We've had pets use them to go to the bathroom on, which is not recoverable.
That's the modern version of my dog ate my homework?
Yeah. And we have had some cords. Dogs do like cords, chewing on them. But I will dig it up, Michael, but I know I went through everything I had budgeted, and I had $10,000 budgeted.
Well, and that's just for parts. That doesn't include the substantial amount of staff time that goes into it.
Correct. That is just buying parts. Yeah. Because I want to say, we saw a drastic swing on screens, depending on availability. I think the lowest I was getting screens for was like 125, and at times, in the height of the pandemic, it was swinging up to like 275. And so we tried to repair what we could, but if we were getting to the point where we had no spares, it's spend the money, because it's still cheaper than buying a new one, because even buying a new laptop was extremely difficult. So it was just a lot of issues compounded. So one of the goals is, we do have good, good information on the devices we currently own, what things tend to break accidentally, and what we might have seen from wear and tear. And so we're, I've already started ordering and checking out what's available, and, you know, getting 10 units of different parts, so we have them right away, so that kids aren't without devices.
So were you, were you charging previously to now?
So the initial intent was not to, but then we got to a point, and I think the, I think the pandemic just made it harder because there was so, everyone left, and everything was at home. And we did get to a point where we were seeing so much damage that we were routing it through the principals, and we did start charging. And there were situations where, you know, one student might have damaged another student's laptop, so that student was, like, I remember early on, someone had, you know, a student had their pen on their laptop, and someone walked by and slammed the lid down, and with the pen there, it just shattered the screen. So it was situational based. We tried to work with families as best we could. I know the high school did a really good job of having students help out, you know, if they, if there was a damage and they couldn't afford to cover it, they'd help out with, you know, maybe cleaning the laptops after school, you know, finding ways to work around that. But by the third year, I think, is when we started really charging, unless something in the first or second year was very egregious and purposeful damage, and we were definitely charging.
So Josh, that, so I do want the board to have an accurate picture of how kids took care of the laptops as well, percentage-wise. The reason that this fee is so nominal is because most of the kids took care of their machines.
Yes. Leading up to the pandemic, we were seeing very low numbers, lower than what other school districts in the state have told me what to expect. And it was when we hit the pandemic and things got really hard to find. And I think what it was is little things would break. And then, over time, we wouldn't see the kids for several months, and it would just get worse and worse. And then another piece would break, and that would lead to further things. So by the time school ended in 2020, and we collected them, some of them were literally falling apart. And it's just because we didn't, you know, if they were in the classroom, the teacher would have noticed, you know, certain things falling off. But up until that point, and we did have a, we had an issue that we felt was more of a manufacturer defect that led to further damage. But again, the parts were really hard to come by, even when we could get them to agree that it was a manufacturer's defect. So, but overall, I thought the kids did really well, and what killed us was just being out of school for so long, so.
Dan?
Could you, this is great, by the way. I'm really glad we're doing this. And reflecting back on when we talked about this at the policy committee, it's been a little while, so I just maybe need my memory refreshed. The process of determining when damage is not included in the coverage, certain examples, like you said, are going to be obvious. You left it on the car, it's destroyed. When you get into more of a gray area where there might even be a disagreement between, you know, your department and the student, or as to whether, you know, it's willful or abuse of the item or whatever, can you talk a little bit about how you're going to navigate that?
So I will be working directly with the principals, because they know the students better than I do. And they're going to, hopefully, we'll be able to work with the families and come up with an ultimate agreement. But, you know, I think where, like the example you just said, it fell off a car, water damage, I'm hoping those are going to be very clear. But we have had some instances where people have disagreed with our findings, and we work through the principal and ultimately try to meet the parent in the middle. And that's why we're hoping this is just an easier solution, as long as they enroll in the program. So I wish I had a better answer, but...
Twenty dollars per student?
Per student, yes.
Not per family?
Correct. So Matt does not get the break.
You see?
I'm glad we're moving in this direction also to Michael and Denise's questions about what we know about past needs and costs. Is the, is the philosophy under the program that it's an insurance program, and with the $20 that we collect for most children, spread over more, more families, that the, that will break even essentially? Or is it a, is the expectation that it's sort of, it's a service to families to not have such risk for high costs, but that will end up subsidizing the cost for materials?
I feel like it's number two.
Okay.
Because if you see the cost for stuff, you know, if we do see lots of, lots of breaking, then, you know, we'll probably end up spending more than we take in. But we also don't know how many people will opt in, and where we're back in school, maybe, you know, we'll see less damage. It does seem like as the devices age, damage increases. So I think we see that more towards the end of the life of the device. But, yeah, I believe, and Dr. Morse, feel free to chime in, but I believe that's our, just trying to find a better way to support families with a nominal fee and not make this a financial burden for them, but also, you know, make sure that, you know, there's a realization that these devices do cost money, and, you know, the $20 is very nominal, I feel.
If there's a family that is not, does not qualify for free or reduced-priced lunch, if they do not sign up, then they would be responsible for the higher costs.
Correct.
Will all families who are eligible for free or reduced-priced lunch be automatically enrolled, or do they still need...
It's why we're using Doris's program, because Doris is the only administrator in the district. I can't even see it. That can determine whether somebody's free or reduced. So by using her program, she'll be able to tell Josh, there's no...
Yeah. So the, so the way, she was double-checking some things for me, but if you're familiar with the Lunch Portal, and it's important for people to make sure they're signed up. I know that lunch was free for the past couple of years, so people might not have signed up. It's a newer system, so please, if you haven't, make sure you get signed up, especially now that lunch is not free. But there's a store inside, and we actually use the store for the seat fundraiser in here. And so when you log into your portal, it says School Store, and I believe the way we have it set up is, there'll be an option, it'll just say ORCSD Care. And when you click on it, all of the, your students associated with your account will show up. And so the way that Doris has set this up, if a family qualifies for free and reduced lunch, it'll just say $0, and then they can just check out, and it'll be on there. I was, we're trying to make sure we understand the process, but I believe that's how we're going to go through it. And then Doris will just give me a list of everyone who's paid at that point from her system, probably weekly to start with, and then we can notify people. So in online registration, we'll have an opt-in form, so at least we'll know who wants to, who's interested, and then we can filter on that, email everybody out with further instructions. And Doris said she's happy to help people, walk people through getting into Titan and how to check out. But being this is our first time, this was, this felt like the simplest way since Doris has access to that data, and she can just kind of give us, here's the people that are paid, so.
Brian?
I mean, I'm glad the word is not anywhere in here, but I think we have to be careful when we message this, is that we don't call it insurance, because there's a lot of legalities that get involved when you call it insurance, you know, call it coverage or whatever else. I know a couple of times, we've already heard it referred to as insurance, but I'm sure that discussion has been had, because it's nowhere in here, which is great. But, yeah, just, I know parents will call it insurance, but we've got to make sure on our end, the word insurance doesn't go out there, because then you get other people involved.
We can't do it under your license, Brian?
No. You don't want to do this under my license, so.
We're just borrowing Apple's marketing terms, tweaking them for our own.
Right.
Is there some advantage to communicating this to families prior to enrollment? Because I know when I do enrollment for... Because I know when I do enrollment for my kids, I am trying to get in and out as fast as humanly possible. And so I am not necessarily going to read the entire ORCSD Care policy. I'm just going to hit no and move on, because I don't know what it is, and I'm trying to get it done in the middle of two meetings.
So we have a letter ready to go. And I don't think Suzanne, when we talked today, if that was going to go out with the principals' info on Monday.
Yeah, so we have, in registration, there'll be a place for families to check yes or no, but there will be other times where we push out the information. And I, and I have a letter that I'll be sending out, and I'll give it to the principals, so that they can send it with theirs. Just notifying people that this is coming, it's going to be part of your registration packet. Just be aware of it. We were waiting for, for you all to look at it first, before we did anything else.
So yes.
Students, Brian?
Thank you, Josh.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you. That concludes my report, Michael.
All right. Business administrator, Sue, nothing tonight? We don't have a student representative report tonight. Finance committee, not tonight?
Nope.
That will bring us to the unanimous consent agenda. Is there anything here on the unanimous consent agenda that anybody would like to discuss separately? Without any of those, I will move approval of the unanimous consent agenda, which includes a motion to approve nominations for the high school department heads and activity stipends, the middle school activity stipends, and the Mastway and Muharamit School Activity Stipends. I have a second from Brian, all those in favor? Seven in favor, the activity stipends are approved.
So when we ended the school year, we talked about the LiDak position, and the board put a substantial increase in that line, because we felt there was a real need. And we decided to approach the opening in two different ways. We posted it as a contracted service, and we posted it as a position. And we held our breath, because we didn't think that we would have many applicants. We did not have many applicants, but we had the right applicant. So today, I interviewed the candidate for the LiDak position. She's at the beginning stages of a career, five, six years. Market value for the position, she was getting paid approximately $70,000 in her current position, $72,000. And we had combined, put together a $90,000 budget. And so we offered her $75,000. The issue with this position is, it doesn't fit into the teachers' guild. Because in order to pay her at the market rate, the teacher's contract doesn't work. Nor is she a recognized teacher as, as, through the state. So what we'll be doing is providing her a non-union wage of $75,000, and the benefits that we would offer a professional staff member, teacher or administrator, depending on, on the particular benefit. So I have to say that I'm super impressed. This is a really amazing find. And you think about all the work that we've done over the years, and SEL, and counseling, and psychology, and how we've built out this department. To literally have our own LiDak counselor is really a gift that nobody expected. So both the high school principal and myself are pretty excited to put this person in front of you. She'll have to give a pretty substantial notice to her current employer, probably about a month. But what we said to her is that we would work with her current employer, because there, on the opening of school, it's really critical. She's with us, just as it was critical for Rachel to be with us. Because that's the one time we have to say to the world, this person exists, and everybody can hear it at the same time. And so, right, Becker and I worked through it with her that the first two weeks of school, she'd just do a shared role between her current employer and here. And that gives Britta the opportunity to get to know our counseling staff, and our psych staff, and our nursing staff. She also will be able to, as Jay will be happy to hear this, she'll be able to work with middle school kids, because unfortunately, lots of times, this is where this behavior begins. Probably it'll be like an 85, 15 percentage, because most of our needs are at the high school. But I didn't want to leave the middle school out. If there was a need, she was more than willing to do that. And it would be 195, 94-day contract, as opposed to 184, which puts her on the same cycle as the counselors. So I'm very happy to present this candidate to you for your support.
Brian?
Does this position need to be DOE certified?
It's not, it's not, it's a licensed position. So she has a, a master's in behavior, and a master's in alcohol and drug counseling, or certification, excuse me, sort of, a license, I get it. So a certain percentage of our staff don't have teaching certificates, they have licenses. She comes onto the licensed side of it.
I didn't even know if they qual, if they were required to have one, just because they're student-facing, so.
Yep, she'll be fingerprinted, just like everybody else, and all of that.
Any questions, Dr. Morse?
Really, really better, right? Because we were talking about it last time, we were hoping we might get, like, two and a half days a week for the entire school year.
Exactly. So this is like, really truly, the only way I can describe this is a gift. You know, we are waiting for the results from the youth risk survey. Now we have somebody who can really build a program with our counselors around the needs of our kids. And our counselors have done a yeoman's job up to this point, but this is a specialist in this area. And so it really expands our support for children dramatically.
Looking for a motion, Brian?
Motion to approve the hiring of the LiDak candidate.
We have a motion from Ryan, a second from Denise.
Yes.
Any further discussion or questions for Dr. Morse? All those in favor? Seven in favor, the LiDak position is approved. All right, and the next one is the communication position.
So it's, it's the, it's the annual, every meeting question. If we're going to have this position, where does the money come from? And I did an analysis of our hires for the year, for the summer. And we have done extremely well in terms of hiring. We've gotten some really terrific people, like Britta, that we just talked about. And at the same time, our principals have done a really great job of, of hiring within the budget, well within the budget. And so we have an undesignated balance in our salary account and health insurance account, equalling about $195,000. What I would suggest is that we could use $20,000 of this to add to the $50,000 that's already budgeted. I had a great, I had a brief meeting, but it was always great with Amy. And we went through some data that she was able to collect. And the, you know, the range for this position is anywhere from 30 to 120. My guess is the 30 is a part-time position. I asked her what she felt, felt was the necessary number, or the recommended number for our district, and she felt like 70 was very reasonable. And she's here, and Amy, if you'd like to add to this.
Hi, just a couple other quick notes, since we last spoke about this position, and thinking about what the cost of it would be. I was very lucky over the last two weeks to have some excellent conversations with other people in similar positions in New Hampshire, and also to connect with the National School Public Relations Association, which is a national organization that has a New England chapter. Two years ago, they sent out a survey to their 1,800 members, and that included a salary survey, that's where I got the data. So not only did I have a sense of what some of the New Hampshire salaries were for similar-sized school districts, but we really had excellent access to, an understanding for the region, for one-person shops versus typical salaries for four-person shops, 12-person shops. So sometimes I think when we started this conversation, we thought about Kansas City School District, they have probably 10 people doing communications there, I don't know, but I'm guessing. And so the, the salary for that top person would be much, much higher, over $120,000 likely. A typical salary for one-person shops in New England is more in the range that we're talking about. So, so that was really helpful, to be able to get that data, and not just feel like we were, excuse me, guessing a little bit. I just want to see if there's anything else here. No, I mean, we have other data. Unfortunately, I can't share the whole report with you, because they asked me not to, because we're not members. Although, Dr. Morse, I said I thought it would be a couple thousand dollars to become members. It's $295 a year. So I highly suggest that this, if you vote for this candidate, or this person, this hire, that they become members, because there's a lot of great resources. This is only school communications directors in the, in the association.
I'm sorry for missing the last meeting, so some of this may have been covered already. I have three questions. And part of it is, as a relatively new school board member, I was struck last year when we found money during the year to create new, two new teacher roles, which fully supported, but the effect that that had on the following year's budget, because some of the, the gains were already committed. So it felt, in a way, that we had less maneuverability, regardless of whether we came out with the, the right sort of budget and priorities. It just felt at that time. So I just wanted to be very clear, and I know, I saw in the minutes, Denise, you brought this up a little bit. What staff positions have we committed to since we approved the budget? So for example, one is the LiDak position, one is the halftime science position. Are those the, the equivalent of the two Chinese Mandarin teachers that we've gotten to by this point? Or are there others that we, that I should be oriented to?
The board takes action on any new position. So since the budget was approved, the only new positions were those positions that were approved this spring. So that's the total, you, you had it pretty, pretty down, you had it down. Halftime science, the LiDak position.
Okay.
That's, that, yeah.
So sort of $115,000, as I recall, or something, something like that.
Yeah. Yep.
Is there, when we're looking for, for funds, I didn't see a bullet point for public relations at all. And I know there's the difference between communications. Is there the, has there been the discussion about substituting, or sort of discontinuing our relationship with John Guilfold, and directing that here?
I'll just say, there hasn't, but I wanted to bring it up tonight as a consideration. I think that once you have your candidate, you may decide you're able to do that. Because I would, I would expect, what I understand the public relations organization doing for you should, should be able to be done by a communications director. That, but I don't know those costs, and I don't know what that full relationship is.
Yeah, it's a one-year commitment, so we can back out of it at the end of the school year, and that'll cover the cost of.
At the end of next school year.
Of the one we're in.
And my final question was about DEIJ expertise, is that something that, in a way, requires sort of, perhaps a more sophisticated, or it's, it's its own type of communication? And I wondered whether there was any conversation about including that among preferred qualifications, or otherwise putting this in here. I remember even the board, in considering communications and DEIJ priorities, had even thought about trying to find someone who could do both. And it seems like it would benefit the district to have some awareness, understanding faculty with DEIJ-related communication in specific.
I think that's a board decision. I think it's, yeah, I, I have opinions, but I don't think that mine matter. I think that's you, something you guys may decide to add to the job description before you post it, or not? That's up to you.
Beyond what's in the skills and abilities section already?
I think when we had that conversation, it was mostly around budget efficiency, and, and asking the same person to do two different roles, as opposed to.
And the other piece of it, from my perspective, you see, is you want a person who's a specialist in communications. You don't want a person who's a specialist in different types of units inside the school, a specialist in high school, a specialist in counseling, a specialist in DEIJ. What you're looking for is a skill set that we can apply to every one of those.
I think that's true, and Heather oriented me to the bullet point in skills, abilities, and competencies that does talk about the DEIJ commitment and the role public schools can play. So, you know, I'm satisfied with, with, with that in the job description. I think that as we're looking at the types of things we want to communicate, it is, you know, it is reasonable to expect that a person has the, some familiarity in, in, in speaking about different parts of the district's vision, or about some of the things that might be a little more complicated to communicate. And that, so we shouldn't be totally agnostic in, you know, in what other experience they, they come with, as is reflected in the job description.
Yeah.
Denise?
Definitely, I, I feel like the job description did, you know, kind of, I feel like a little bit more focused, or maybe I just missed it before. But the one, the one bullet under roles and responsibilities, under the writing the initial drafts of superintendent's communications, and this, this is really just kind of looking ahead a couple of years down the road. Obviously, we may, we'll have a different person in leadership. And I'm wondering if instead, perhaps that individual might not want that person to be doing that, maybe just substitute assist as needed, or something, instead of saying, write initial drafts of superintendent's communications, you know, just to substitute, you know, assist as needed. That, that's my only suggestion there, just because I, I just feel like different individuals may have, you know, different feelings about that.
I loved reading that, actually, Denise, because, because you have such, sometimes such sort of a passion and a clear desire to communicate something, that it might be most efficient and effective for you to take the first draft, and for them to come into it.
Can I ask a question of Amy on that question? Is that something we should be looking for in a new superintendent? That's willing to have somebody else write their first draft, or?
No, no, that kind of detail isn't important. I think every leader I've ever worked with has their own style. What you want is somebody who can be that second set of eyes, can also be there in the conversation when you're talking about, what is it that needs to be communicated? What considerations do we need to think about? How will this land with different audiences? In what order do we need to communicate this to different audiences? So they're more of a strategic partner, as well as a language, you know, massager, as it were. You know, they're, they should be able to do both. But I wouldn't worry about the, I think it's a good point, in that it will shift with any, anyone they're working with. But that's just part of what it is to be a communications professional, is to figure out how we're going to work together.
Maybe then, instead of assist as needed, it could be review and edit if needed.
Yeah, I just, I, I just felt like it was very prescriptive to say, write initial drafts. Because I just felt like, well, maybe the person doesn't want this communication person to write the initial draft. Maybe they want to write the initial draft, or whatever. So I would, that was, I was just, my only suggestion was to kind of reword that a little bit.
Partner with superintendent work?
Brian?
Jim, what were you thinking for like a 260, 240-day?
Yeah, this would be a year-round position. We actually had that conversation. What Amy shared actually validated what I expected. So much of, like, laying out the school year in terms of communications happens in the summertime. If you're going to be a proactive writer, presenter, you're going to have to have the summertime to work. Now, you know, the nice thing about this position is, they could have their vacation time during the school year. They don't, but in the summer, it's invaluable. This month in particular, Michael was in my office this morning. I have all the topics of the opening newsletter to go out to the, to, to the schools. So you do so much planning in the summertime, it's critical this position be available in the summertime.
And that was confirmed by the different people I spoke to in these, in this position. They said, oh, gosh, no, not, definitely not, that's when I get all my work done.
Thank you for being here tonight, Amy. Thank you for being here tonight, Amy, and for continuing to help us circle in on, on where we need to be here. And especially for the benchmarking and market research side of it. Can you outline some of the changes between the, the job description from that we looked at two weeks ago or whatever it was and, and tonight? Not, not line by line, but general, general themes of how you distilled the, the discussion and the feedback from the last meeting?
Yeah, that's a great question. I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared to answer it. I think that as I looked at the position again, I think that the feedback was excellent. And I think we have been working on this as we go to say, is this a leadership position? Is this a supportive position, supporting position? And I think I was able to, I felt more confident after our last conversation that I could shift the role back into someone who will be seen as a leader in communications, who will help with annual training, who will help with whoever comes to them. And the way that you were discussing earlier, that as we, as we, new roles come on board, we see them as resources. I would fully expect this person to be a resource for anyone in the district, having a challenge with their communications and saying, can I talk this through with you? So that will be, you know, that person as well. I, I think there's still a little bit of a question around exactly how they will integrate with all of the work that is currently being done. I'm still having these interviews with principals and different department leaders, and I'm learning a lot, and the opportunities are really exciting. But I, I'm very comfortable bringing this today because I've, just because I've seen so many of these positions, and they just tend to mold a little bit as you go, as you learn around where people need more help. It's, it's not the kind of position you can say, well, ten percent of your time will be spent here, and we know that for sure. Well, we would be learning a lot as we go.
Heather, did there are concerns with the roles and responsibilities?
This is much tighter. I am a much happier camper.
A question about eighty percent versus a hundred percent. Again, you may have talked about this last week, and I saw a bit of it in the notes. If it were an eighty percent position, would there be needs that we couldn't meet, or would it just mean that we were slower, a little bit slower, or did a little bit less in reaching these goals?
I would expect you to take some things out of this job description because slow communications don't, you, you need them to happen when they need to happen. They're not, it's not something you can say, well, we just won't communicate this for another month because we can't get to it. That's something you can do with a website update, but it's not something you can do with all of the, the players here and everything that needs to be done. So I would, I would guess I would put it back to the board to say, what do they see here that, you know, what twenty percent doesn't, isn't as, as important? And I was excited actually just to add to that, on the, doing the salary research, I didn't really know what I was going to find, honestly. I hadn't done that kind of analysis in a while. So I was pleased to see these full-time, year-round positions landing in that seventy-thousand-dollar, you know, window that felt very, it felt like we would be able to get a good group of candidates for really what we need. Because remember, we can all agree, this is a little bit of an unusual situation. I'm going to be helping to onboard them, they'll report directly to the superintendents, but I won't be here forever. So we really want someone to come in who, who knows what they're doing. And I'll, and then my role sort of becomes, can I help with the handbook? Can I help with some guidelines? Can I help figuring out social media policy so that they can get going a little bit faster? But they should be able to be seen as a leader immediately.
Denise?
So thinking about money, however, so the seventy thousand would just be salary. So we're, we're talking additional for benefits. So the actual, what is the actual amount that we would be, we're talking about total for the budget?
So the answer to that is the reason we don't put benefits in because it's specific to the individual. So if somebody takes a single subscriber, it's ten thousand. If somebody takes a dual couple, it's about twenty thousand. If somebody takes a full family, it's about twenty-six thousand. And then, of course, there's biker and retirement and so forth.
So again, that just makes me a little bit more nervous in terms of the total, the total cost of the, of the full-time position.
So worst-case scenario, if somebody came in and took full family, you're probably adding sixty thousand dollars to the, the budget. And then they have the choice between insurances where, you know, the numbers I gave you are the more expensive plan. So I think that UC's comment in relation to our public relations firm, you know, going into the next school year will more than cover the additional cost. In terms of covering those additional costs, we have a generous amount of money to draw from in terms of the undedicated salary and, and health insurance. I, I think we're in okay place.
For the current year, at least, we're already at the first of August. We haven't posted this yet. It'll be at least the first of September before we have somebody on board. So we're already down to five, sixth of a year for whatever the amount is.
Plus, they're not AA-certified teachers, so they're actually at a lower retirement rate, too.
For me, it's the...
A lower what, Brian?
They're at a lower retirement rate. It goes from twenty-one to fourteen.
For me, it's the ongoing, sort of it's next year's budget. Do you have a ballpark for what our PR contract is that we probably would be saving going forward?
I'm going to guess from the top of my head, UC, I'm guessing there's that, I'm really guessing because I'm, I can't remember exactly, but I'm going to say thirty, forty thousand dollars as well.
So that's significant. That's, that's actually really, that makes me feel much more comfortable with a full-time position at the salary that you've described.
Can you repeat that number? I missed it, I'm sorry.
I think it's thirty to forty thousand, Matt. It could be higher, it could be a lower. I, I will get the number out to you tomorrow, but I know it's substantive.
I was thinking it was at the low end of that range.
Yeah, okay. So Michael has probably a better feel for it.
So we're looking for, if the board is comfortable with this, we're looking for a motion to approve this as a full-year position for the Orister Verk School District Communication Specialist. Is there further discussion or motion? Heather?
A motion to approve the communication position.
We have a motion from Heather. We have a second from Brian.
I have one more comment.
Yep, discussion.
And, and I would definitely say that that, that would be my, my ceiling. I'll, I'll, I'll vote to support this, but, you know, it, that would be my, my ceiling, like the seventy, seventy thousand salary. So, you know, my, I guess my worry is that it's kind of like the LIDAC to come back and be like, oh, well, we looked and we couldn't find anyone. I'm like, then we have, in my opinion, I, I couldn't support going higher than that. We would have to look at other options. But I will, I will approve it for up to the seventy thousand for the salary.
Other discussion? All those in favor of approving the communication position? Seven in favor. The communication specialist position is approved.
Thank you.
Did we just check off a goal?
Did.
So we're going to, we're going to, we're down to school board committee updates. Are there any committee updates? None tonight? Public comments? No public comments. Our closing actions, we have our, our upcoming meetings. There is a regular meeting right here in two weeks on August seventeenth. The manifest committee will meet on the thirty-first, which also happens to be the first day of school for students. And then our next meeting in September will be September seventh. Is there something else?
No.
All right. All right. So, so, so that brings us to non-public. So I will move to enter a non-public session under New Hampshire RSA Chapter ninety-one A, Section Three, Paragraph Two, Subparagraph One, Consideration of Matters Relating to the Participation, Preparation for and Carrying Out of Emergency Functions. We have a second from Brian. This requires a roll call vote.
Heather Smith, yes. UC Terrell, yes.
Dan Klein, yes.
Michael Williams, yes.
Denise Day, yes.
Brian Sisneros, yes.
Matthew Bacon, yes.
All right, so we are in non-public session. When we come back, all we will be doing is a journey, and there'll be no other action following this. I move.[1445.15]